Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Wall Township Public School District Board of Education meeting for Tuesday, February 21st. Let's please rise for this flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'd like to ask the board secretary, Mr. Smythe, to please read the sunshine announcement and perform roll call.
Yes, this is the Wall Township Board of Education meeting for which adequate notice under the Open Public Meeting Act was provided by a notice to the CoStar, Asbury Park Press, all Wall Township public schools, Township Clerk's office, and the Board Administration office on January 5th, 2023, take a roll call. Mr. Anizio?
Here.
Mr. Buffa?
Here.
Ms. D. Giovanni?
Here.
Ms. Hodnett?
Here.
Mr. Malev?
Here.
Mr. Nasser?
Mr. Sam Filippo?
Here.
Mr. Wondrack?
Here.
Ms. Stites?
Here. Thank you. At this time, may I please have a motion for the board to go into executive session for letters A, D, G, and H on the agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Sam Filippo.
I'll second.
Is that Mr. Anizio? Great, thank you. The board is going to go into executive session.
Voice vote.
Oh, I'm sorry?
Can I have a voice vote?
No. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sorry, guys. Thanks. All right. Board is going to go back into executive session. We expect to be back in public session at 7:30.
Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone back. We're going to reconvene the board meeting for Tuesday, February 21st, for the Walthamshire Board of Education. Mr. Smythe, will you please do a roll call?
Yes, Mr. Adenizio?
Here.
Mr. Buffa?
Here.
Ms. D. Giovanni?
Here.
Ms. Hodnett?
Here.
Mr. Malev?
Here.
Mr. Nasser?
Here.
Mr. Sanfilippo?
Here.
Mr. Wondrack?
Here.
Ms. Madison Brody?
Here.
Ms. Lauren Gill?
Here.
Ms. Bryn Heaney?
Here.
And Ms. Stites?
Here. At this time, please welcome members of the Wall High School and NDCC Color Guard as we do the flag salute.
Go, color guard. Hold. Right face. Freeze and go.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Carry. Color. Left face. Forward march.
At this point in the meeting, we'd like to welcome our student representatives, Madison Brody, Lauren Gill, and Bryn Heaney. We welcome you ladies to go ahead and give us your student representative report.
Good evening, board. As we're coming back from February break and getting back into the groove of school, I think everyone's feeling like that break was much needed. Students enjoyed their long weekend, definitely returning calmer and ready to learn. We're wishing luck to Chris at his soccer game tonight, as well as Ally with her last night of basketball as a Wall High School senior. Sophomores are especially excited for the end of the week. Friday, sophomores at Wall High School will host the Dames Ball, where students will dress up and at the end of the night, name a diamond, which is kind of similar to like a prom queen slash king situation of the ball. This is the first of many special events to come for the sophomores, and we wish them a wonderful time.
Just recently, the spring musical was announced. This year's musical will be Guys and Dolls, a play focused on Marlon Brando, who is the personification of the American spirit, making your own road to success. Tryouts were hosted at the beginning of this month, and all of the grades are excited to see the final product come spring. Most importantly, exactly one week ago was Valentine's Day. I know everyone was ecstatic for an excuse to eat chocolate. The National Honor Society members worked hard to promote and sell candy grams, and the social club also fundraised by selling gorilla stuffed animals to students. Love was definitely in the air this year.
Winter sports are slowly coming to an end. Indoor track and field ended with many students earning their personal bests, and it's such a great way to end off the season. The boys' basketball team, their season has come to an end after a great season played by all of the boys. After facing many challenging teams, they ended with a record of six and eighteen, and we're so proud of their fight. Great job, boys. The girls' basketball team continued on tonight, where they faced Manasquan at five o'clock. Their current record is now twelve and thirteen. What a great season. Congratulations to all of the winter sports on a fantastic season. We anticipate a great start to our spring sports, which will begin in just a few weeks. To all of our spring athletes, make sure you fill out your family ID forms and have an approved physical to be able to participate. We hope our spring sports have an awesome start, and we're excited to see the hardware that they will bring home. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ladies, and thanks for the timely reminder about the family ID and physicals. That information is also on the website for anybody who's interested. At this time, we are going to be having several special presentations. You were certainly invited to stay, or if you've got things to get back to, we understand. So thanks so much for all your hard work.
We have the best student reps, I think, in the universe, so I just wanted to give them a shout out. And I know how hard it is to come out in the middle of winter, especially, I think we, didn't we have a tornado warning, I think? So that is how dedicated they are. So I just wanted to make everybody out there certainly aware of that. This evening, Ms. Stites mentioned that we have several special presentations, and in the interest of to really maximize everyone's viewing, we are, I'm going to ask the Board of Education if they could take a couple seats in the audience so that when the presentations do take place, we, it is directed all in the same direction, so we can all be on the same page together. So thank you very much. No. Okay, this is a little more of a natural position, actually, for me, a podium. I was a principal forever, which I was always at it, so it's much more comfortable for me, so I kind of like it. So this evening, we want to kick off our presentations this evening with really, it's such a point of pride, and that is some of the magic that happens in the art rooms at the high school. So we're going to kick off the night with a presentation from two of our art teachers, one, Ms. Carrie Kelly, and two, Ms. Jill Alexander, who is also an art teacher, but she also serves as the department chairperson at the high school for the art department. So without any further ado, I would love to turn this over to them.
Can I take this out? Okay. I think I feel more comfortable. I can hold it. Sorry. It's just the way I feel. Okay. I'm not going to tear it out of the floor, though.
So, Dr. Handerhand, thank you so much for having us tonight, and the board, thank you as well. This is exciting for us because I think unless we have a student that specifically wins something, and then it's in the paper, or it's on the website, you don't necessarily get to see what happens on the day today. So I'm hoping that the presentation that we have can show you a little bit of what goes on in our classrooms. I teach the drawing and painting classes at the high school, and Carrie, she teaches the ceramics class. So I will allow the work to kind of speak for itself. So some of the pieces that were up here, you could also see the originals in the hallway. Some of the pieces that are actually in the hallway were the midterms this year, so I kind of just pulled some of the stuff that I had from the board, but it's pretty incredible, right, because we have hands-on midterms and things like that. But I think overall, what I just wanted to say was, thank you. Thank you to the community. Thank you so much for sort of empowering our students and really standing behind the arts. We have a lot to be really proud of. We are almost always the winners of really almost every state and county competition that we could get our hands on to enter. So it's always really a very exciting part of the year, starting right now. We had a really exciting weekend, so I'm going to quickly talk about that. I'll let Carrie also talk about her students. So all of this news broke over the long weekend, and by the way, I did invite students, but because I guess it's been about six days since I've seen some of them, I'm afraid that they have forgotten about tonight. So hopefully, the next time, we'll get a little bit more of a crowd of the students, so. But anyway, so these actually represent all of the artworks right now that have been selected for competition. Up on the top right, that piece is actually in the Capitol Building right now in Washington, DC. That was made by Joey Sambade. He is a senior right now. And we're about to enter this year's congressional competition, but that was actually last year's, but it's still hanging there now. They haven't taken it down yet, so it hangs there for a period of one year. There's a whole ribbon cutting ceremony. They have his family out there, and it's a really very nice thing. So that's the piece that's there now. And all of the others have actually been selected, like I said, just this weekend. So it's actually very timely that we should be presenting this tonight. So, yeah. So just to talk a little bit about the course offerings, so we have art experience that we offer for our freshmen to take, and then there are all of these different routes. So Carrie, I'll let you talk about the ceramics for a moment.
With the ceramics, we do have a ceramics one and two program. In ceramics one, we work mainly on just fundamental building skills for the first half of the year, and the second half of the year, I try to unleash some a little and get them, let them get a little more creative with their work. The original PowerPoint, it was, all the ceramic work was towards the end, so. And then in ceramics two, I try to have them, from what they've done in ceramics one, especially the second half of the year, develop a little bit more of their own style, and then build a body of work from that as well. So I'll give them a little more of a base, like your canvas is a teapot, so make your teapot look like part of your style. And then, so it's nice to see them develop their own spin on everything and all their artwork, so. And it's interesting with the competitions, too. You know, COVID had made it a little bit tougher, but it made it more creative, so we're submitting more digital pictures of 3D pieces that are other than the actual 3D pieces, which is nice, because, you know, not all the shows take three-dimensional artwork, so, yeah.
And then the other course offerings, the materials that you see up in the red square, those are all the drawing and painting courses, which lead into our AP art. We're hoping also to offer an AP 3D next year. We have one or two students interested, so they would be, Carrie's students from ceramics that would move on to create an AP portfolio. And then, of course, we have 3D design and sculpture. You saw some of that stuff up there as well, the more sculptural things that are not clay necessarily. And the digital illustration, that's sort of more real-world applications of art, all created on the iPad Pro. And then we also have a jewelry design class, which you saw a few of, the earrings and things like that. So this was just, like I said, not only did we have Joey as a winner that night, we also took home second place, third place, and honorable mention, so we just missed first place. That was the only one, so. I have yet to get all of them in one year, but we're working on it. And then this is what we had broken over the weekend, like I said. So Kirsten Brown, she is the winner of this year's teen arts design cover contest. So what that is, is we actually go to Brookdale next month for March 16th and 17th. Brookdale closes its campus for their spring break. However, our students have the opportunity to go, and it's a full day of art-making. They also have their artwork displayed, and they have professional artists critique their work. So it's a really nice opportunity for them to work with other students in Monmouth County and kind of see what else is out there. And Kirsten, what's so cool is that her piece is going to be on the pamphlet that is handed out to every single student at the festival. So that was the artwork that was chosen. And then this is the runner-up, and this will be on the inside cover. So we had top two spots again, so that was great, and this is Avery Noel's design. And then our three students here, so Evelyn on the right is a student of Carrie's, so you'll see a photograph of her three-dimensional tower. And then we have Ellie in the middle, and that's Monica on the left, and they are the winners of the Youth Art Month State Competition. So their artworks are actually going on to Trenton, and they will be honored later this month at a ceremony there at the State House. So that was all exciting news that broke over the weekend. And then these are just some individual pictures of the students. Right? So the last thing I would just say is that, you know, so much more goes on in our room than just teaching students about drawing and painting and ceramics and sculpture. So much I feel like of what we do on a daily basis is problem-solving, and there's so much more exploration and things like that, that you wouldn't even believe. I have a student right now who's working I have a student right now who's working on a project, has been with me for three years, and she was very interested in mental illnesses. So she started exploring mental illnesses in each piece for her AP portfolio. She's actually going on to study art at the college level. She wants to be an art teacher. But she said to me, I would love to take each of my pieces, and she always uses herself as a model, by the way. And she said, I want to find a way to put them all together, but I want it to be me in all of them, in the clothing, but on the bleachers at the school in the gym. So she went down to your book, got a tripod, figured the whole thing out, had a whole duffel bag full of clothes, dressed in each of the outfits, put Xs on the bleachers, figured out where to sit for each position, and took 15 pictures and photoshopped them all together. And every picture is her sitting on the bleachers. So she found a way to do this. But so much of what we do, that's just one example, but there's so much of that of what we do on a daily basis that you wouldn't really think about. It's not just drawing and painting and ceramics and sculpture. But we're making really great things happen for our kids, and they're making us proud. So you want to, all right. So thank you so much for allowing us to share with you tonight what we do every day.
Thank you so much, Ms. Alexandra. Thank you so much, Ms. Kelly. All right, there we go. When I saw the video of all the students' artwork, you know, I had the privilege of previewing it. And I actually, I was taken aback a little bit. And when I used, when I sought to describe the video, I actually used the word, "I was left breathless." And that's not a word that I typically use, but when I, you know, in my normal everyday vocabulary. But I was left breathless because of all of, not just the talent, but the passion, the commitment, and just on the part of the students, but on the part of the faculty. I mean, you guys, and I had the privilege of working closely with you for a little while. And what I can't tell you the most amazing things that come out of your rooms. And your students, they literally run into your rooms. I mean, I saw it firsthand. So we're very, very fortunate. And, you know, you left me breathless today. So that's, that's not so easy, actually. But this evening, you know, we, every once in a while, we take, take time out to really celebrate some wonderful things that are going on in our schools. And for the, for the next presentation, I would like Board President Christine Stites to join me, please. We probably should have gotten an aisle seat for you. Okay. So this evening, it is our pleasure to recognize the efforts of one of our fine Wall High School students, Nate Atardi. Many members of this committee are already aware of this amazing Eagle project, of his amazing Eagle project honoring our veterans. We are so very proud of Nate, and we are thrilled that his tribute to veteran service is forever commemorated at the entrance of Wall High School. Nate's wonderful service is not only recognized and appreciated locally. His efforts have received national attention. The House of Representatives and the Senate, well, they must have read the co-star because they took note of Nate's service. And they awarded him with the bronze, silver, and gold certificates. I didn't even know that was a thing that you could do, win all of them? The gold, silver, and bronze certificates. And these were awarded for outstanding contribution to his community and undertaking the values of initiative, service, and achievement. And those words resonated with me because under, especially, I mean, contributions is profound, but the undertaking, the values of initiative, service, and achievement. And that is, you know, I think that's really hallmark to really the messaging and all of the service that is central to what Nate does. So that really resonated with me. So in addition to his recognition from the Senate and the House of Representatives, President Biden awarded Nate with the President's Volunteer Service Award. And that was bestowed in recognition and appreciation for his commitment to strengthening our nation and communities through volunteer service. So Nate, I am fairly confident that your service will continue, and I know that we all look forward to seeing where your future takes you. So at this time, it is my privilege to introduce to you Nate Atardi. Nate, come on down.
Congratulations, Nate, on behalf of the board. We have this certificate for you, recognizing your achievements. A little gift for you as well. Thank you so much. We're so proud of you.
Thank you so much.
Let's put you on the spot.
Sure. I just wanted to say that I love serving my community, and it's definitely gave back to me. It's helped raise me as a person. And I don't think I would be where I am today if it wasn't for this amazing community. So thank you.
Nate, we are so incredibly proud of you. So it really, I'm not the only one that looks forward to seeing where the future will take you. We've had a really busy February here in Wall Township Public Schools. And at this time, I'd like to welcome to the podium Central School Principal, Estradios Monifis. If he, if Principal Monifis would come join me. And I'll turn the mic over to him.
Hi, everybody. So to be short and succinct, I think I started at Central on July 1st. And I believe at 9:01 AM, I heard about the Central School lip sync, which was a very popular event we held in the past. Unfortunately, it was put on hiatus due to things out of our control, but it's back. And I have to tell you, all the rumors I heard about the lip sync are true. It was an incredible event, a great opportunity for students to practice skills they really don't get to in the classroom, and something I was very proud of being a part of for a piece as well. So I am very happy to be able to share that with you tonight and so that you can see the great things that the students at Central were able to, to do in a very short period of time. Thank you.
Clearly, there were two nights in February, Central School was the place to be. So, you know, it was a packed house. And I have to tell you, the high school auditorium is not easy to fill up, but they filled it up quite nicely. I would, I would like to mention that. And I just want to, it's activities like this, it just oozes heart. It oozes heart. And, you know, when the kids, you know, are old like me, they're going to remember their lip sync. You know, they may not remember what they learned in math that day, probably not. It pains me as a former math teacher, but they will always remember what they did in the lip sync. So my hat is off to, you know, certainly the Central School staff and certainly to Cape for putting it together a beautiful, beautiful program. At this point in our special presentations, we will be reporting out on our midyear, midyear progress on our district goals. Each year, the Board of Education adopts, after caucusing in the summer, developing district goals. And our district goals are posted on our website, and we will review them this evening. And we will be giving the community and the Board of Education an update on the progress. So without any further ado, I would like to welcome Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction, Ms. Jennifer McCann. I would like to, are you, will you be staying up there, Ms. Daniel? Okay, so I'm bringing it down from the beginning. So Ms. Heather Daniel, she is our Supervisor of Instructional Technology and Digital Communications. And Ms. Tiffany Steiner, she is our Director of Intervention Services and Student Wellness. And this evening, they will be updating us on their progress towards our district goals. So I want to turn this over to Ms. McCann.
I probably have to use the mic. I like to move. I don't like to stand still. Sorry. Okay, so as Dr. Handerhand mentioned, back at the beginning of the school year, we approved district goals, which provides us a focus for the upcoming school year. We have four goals this year, one being around strengthening academic and social emotional student supports. Also, we are looking towards engaging in the facilitation of the strategic planning process as well as ensuring the preparation for and community awareness of the referendum for December of 2022. And also that we recognize the need to enhance intra and inter-district communications. As Dr. Handerhand mentioned, the three of us all have different parts in each of these goals. So we are going to tag team this presentation this evening. So I'd like to introduce Mrs. Steiner, the Director of Student Wellness and Intervention.
Thank you, Ms. McCann. And already, you're seeing our styles differ because I do like to stay put. Thank you, Mrs. McCann. So our first goal has really three parts and three components. I'd like to speak to the first two of those components. What we are looking to do is create a district-wide systemic process for RTI. And a process that doesn't just encompass all of the academic supports that we want to put into place, but has an approach that's a multi-tiered support structure. This entailed us having a lot of time to reflect on what we do and how we'd like to move ahead to make sure that we're not just planning for the academics, but we're also planning for behavior, social emotional learning, and all those processes that we know are so integral for students to be successful. So in this goal, we're really looking to structure programs, be consistent, and provide opportunities for children to get an overarching experience, but also to scroll down and fine tune some of the experiences they have for them to develop those skills. Alongside of that, second part of the goal was really to make sure that we're providing our staff with the best professional development and opportunities for them to prepare for mental health concerns. So what we're looking with this goal is to really take an approach where we're engaging every part of the school community to make sure that we're meeting the needs of our students. So if you look on the bottom portion of the slide, you see that we were doing workshops and trainings for our staff who are homeless liaisons, for our nursing staff, to really take a holistic approach to helping our students be successful. In addition to that, we were taking a comprehensive approach with our Lifelines Trilogy Program, excuse me, and making sure that we were meeting the mental health needs of our students. And on top of that, looking to do some cultural shifts in what we're offering in SEL. So we began the process of meeting as small committees and coming up with a program that we're really going to be launching fully next year, but we've started the training this year for. It's going to be a complete cultural shift. It's called Seven Mindsets. We're beginning with a book read, and then from this program, really branching out and making sure that we're giving children opportunities to develop all of our castle competencies of self-awareness, social awareness, self-management, responsible decision-making, and relationship skills. So we're really proud to move ahead in both of these capacities and feel like we're going to have a real strong foundation to continue to offer our children excellent opportunities.
Thank you, Ms. Steiner. I would like to point out one thing that I didn't mention earlier in talking about the goals, is that the things that we're mentioning tonight about all of these initiatives and programs or PD that we put forth, this is to this moment. We still have the next couple of months until the end of the school year that we will continue to add some additional programming, professional development, and events related to all of these goals. This, we're not stopped, we're not done yet, but we'll update you all in the summer on what we do from now until then. So the third part of this goal was around pedagogical strategies to meet the individual needs of all of our students. So my team, my supervisors, my directors, my principals, we all took initiatives, looked at what we needed to do, and we've implemented different digital platforms in the district that provide us opportunities for individualized learning for our students and provided our teachers with professional development on those platforms. We've looked at our reading program and have recognized that we need to do more for our students. So we have started to implement some professional development for our teachers in shifting to the science of reading for our teachers for next school year. We've also implemented some intervention strategies in our K-5 math classes that we've actually continued through the middle school and the high school on retention strategies. And not only did we train our math teachers with these approaches, but we've also trained our English, social studies, and science teachers with those strategies as well. Our second goal, as we mentioned in the beginning, is designed around the strategic planning process. And we have taken the, the approach of having a consultant, which the district started working with last school year. And that committee, we designed a strategic planning task force that has met several times this year. And we are going to hit the ground running with a community event on March 1st. So please join us. It will be held at the high school. And this event will be outlining the community overview of the strategic planning process, as well as having some individual breakout sessions in the areas of finance and facilities, as well as academics. And then on March 6th, we will have another community forum where we're looking for your input and feedback for the process around the areas of student life, student wellness, and communications. And now I'm going to pass it off to Ms. Daniels, who's going to present from up at the top because she has to access the district website from the computer up there.
Okay, is this working? It is. So here I am up here, but please continue to bring your attention to the screen. I have to navigate to the website, and we can't do that using the clicker. I actually need to use the, the mouse pad. So Goal Three. So Goal Three was to ensure preparation for and community awareness of a referendum vote in December of 2022. And that goal really is grounded in two primary areas. We succeeded in that goal with the passing of the referendum. Digital communications initiatives and community meetings were the foundations of Goal Three. The digital communication initiatives included the Vision website, a Vision email, social media campaign, informational video, superintendent's community letters, as well as press releases. And then we had a variety of community meetings, from Board of Education meetings to school-based PTO meetings, the virtual forum, an in-person meeting December 9th, right before the referendum vote, as well as a presentation to the Wall Township Committee. The referendum website is still active and growing. You'll notice the format has changed a bit since perhaps the last time you've visited. The resources that were active during the referendum process, June 2022 to December 2022, can be accessed using this link. All of those communications items that I just addressed in the presentation are also available on the website in reverse chronological order, so you can visit the website to see the procedures and materials that we used for the ongoing communications throughout the process. Financial summaries is a new tab that we will be continuing to grow as the referendum process, or the actual, our progress moves forward. And then, of course, we'll be adding progress updates to this tab. So the referendum website is growing as we continue with the exciting moving forward that we're doing as a district with the passing. As Supervisor of Digital Communications, this is a very important goal for me as well. It's recognizing the need to enhance our intra and inter-district communications. As the public by now probably very well knows, we have launched a new district website. This launch was done with the collaboration of stakeholders. We've added a superintendent's communication stream through an Office of the Superintendent tab. We've established the first staff Intranet that Wall Township Public Schools has had. We've established consistency with global icons, formatting, and navigation across all of our school websites, as well as our district website, video integration, and working toward ADA compliance on a consistent basis as best as we can. This did not come without professional development behind the scenes. Over the summer, we delivered professional development in the maintenance of the website and creation of new materials to the district administration, our support staff, as well as our teachers, our professional staff, to develop their own classroom websites. And we do invite ongoing stakeholder input through community feedback. And just a reminder that on the district website at the top, there is a form for feedback for both of our social media portals, which I'll address in a moment, as well as our website. Anytime that you feel you would like to give community feedback, you can submit the form. We do check on a regular basis. And of course, you are invited to contact me directly through my email, haniel@wallpublicschools.org for additional feedback. Second part of the goal of intra and inter-district communication was to establish a streamlined bi-weekly newsletter. We decided to go with a product called S-MOR. And with moving over to S-MOR as a streamlined newsletter that we're using across the district, we provided administrative and support staff training. I worked with the buildings on school template development. I'm currently looking at engagement and analytics, and we're seeing that we have a very high level of engagement with each school newsletter. You can access each S-MOR newsletter via the school websites. However, on our website, you can also access the district S-MORS through Students and Families or Community. S-MOR schools newsletters. And here, each school has a link. I'll go with Central since we just celebrated the lip sync. And you can see an example of the newsletter and all of the highlights. One of the truly engaging areas, I think, for S-MOR is the ability for parents to use the interactive features. Take a survey, watch a video, get the news, sign up for different events directly through one portal. And we are noticing that our engagement in the S-MOR is typically in the thousands of access hits. And people are spending time in each newsletter. So it's not a one-minute hit, it's a five-minute hit, a 10-minute hit. So I do think that we're really moving forward in a positive way with this goal. And the last segment of Goal Four is the intra-interdistrict communications and launching some new social media. Facebook and Instagram are new to us. Please follow our Facebook and Instagram accounts. I have a sheet at the table upfront with QR codes that you can click to follow our social media. We are using the hashtag #WallTogether, and it is growing in the community. It's growing not only in the parents, but I've noticed some businesses also using #WallTogether as their hashtag as well. Throughout the year, Ms. McCann mentioned that this is the middle point, and we'll be reporting out again at the end of the year. Throughout the year, I am going and really looking at the analytics and the engagement, and we'll report out on that for our final report. And again, we welcome continued stakeholder input using the Google form at the top of our website, or you can contact me directly through my email. The form, once again, is up here. And we also have our social media links on the left-hand side of every site for you to follow us. And that concludes my reporting out on the progress. I'm going to hand it back over to Ms. McCann.
So as you can see, we've been busy for the first half of the school year, and we're looking forward to the last couple of months to really hone in on the rest of the events that we can do to make the rest of these goals be successful for the rest of the school year. And a lot of conversations have already started as to what are we focusing on next year, and how can we continue to make all of these goals better moving forward? Because you never want to let one thing fall off, you always want to keep the momentum going. So I just want to take a moment to thank everybody who's participated in making the goals a success so far. It's really been a team effort, and I'm proud to have worked with everybody on the goals so far. So, thank you.
I'd like to thank Ms. McCann. I'd like to thank Ms. Steiner and Ms. Daniel for coming out tonight to give the community really an update at the midpoint of our goals. And I know Ms. McCann certainly thanked everyone and mentioned the team context. I, too, am incredibly grateful to really the Wall team. We're working as a team, and we are accomplishing some amazing things for the students in this district. So I'm incredibly proud of the work that they're all doing. And when it's on a PowerPoint slide, it's like, oh, check, check, that looks easy. Bullet, 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 bullet. Well, I can't tell you how many hours are behind each and every bullet. A whole lot of hours, a whole lot of weekends, a whole lot of nights, you know, and that's what you don't see. But I want everyone that has been working diligently on those goals, I know what you're doing, and keep up the great work, and I know how much time you're putting in, and I really appreciate it. So you're doing some great stuff for our kids. So I thank you. And with that, I'm going to invite the Board of Education to return to the dais.
Mr. Anizia?
Here.
Mr. Buffa?
Here.
Ms. DeGiovanis?
Here.
Ms. Hodnitt?
Here.
Mr. Malev?
Here.
Mr. Nasser?
Here.
Mr. Sam Flipbo?
Here.
Mr. Wondrack?
Here.
Ms. Steiner?
Here. I'd like to thank everybody. We had quite a few special presentations, all certainly highlighting different areas of our school community. I hope everybody enjoyed them at this time. Does anyone on the board have any comments regarding any of the special presentations? Okay, seeing that, I'm going to be opening the floor for public comment on special...
I beg your pardon.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Ms. DeGiovanis.
Sorry, you looked the other way after us, man. I just wanted to point out that every time we do a presentation on the website, there's so much more that gets compounded on that website. And just want to reiterate and point out what a great new website we have, and to invite parents to, you know, immerse themselves in that website. I know I'm on it quite a bit, but every time we get a presentation, there's something new and amazing that's on that website. So I just wanted to point that out, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Did I miss anybody? Okay. At this time, I'm going to be opening the floor for public comment on the special presentations only at this point in time. Please feel free to either come down to the podium here or use the podium up at the top of the stairs.
Betsy Cross, I live in Wall Township. I was watching the art presentation, that was great. I looked at all the pictures outside. So it's good to see you doing something for the arts. We have, you know, we have so many presentations on sports, which is great, but I think this is the first time I've ever seen anything done for the arts. That last talk on the mid-year district goals, what would have been helpful is if we had actually had a handout on them. We have to watch along, take a picture. I don't see them online. Ms. Steiner, were they online? They're online? Is that a yes or a no? Ms. Steiner, do you know if the presentation that you just gave...
It's a comment, period.
I know. She's the president, she should know if it's online.
Please provide your comment, not question.
Okay. I would have liked to have had a handout up there rather than taking a picture of a slide. You're having mid-year goals? Have them out, so people can see them. Stakeholder collaboration, I think that was the first one. I took a picture of that. That was hysterical. There is no stakeholder collaboration. Whatever we say, you just sit there. Just like how I asked a simple question, and Ms. Steiner just sat there. I don't even understand it. You're the president of the board. Ongoing stakeholder input. Ongoing? We don't even have it now. How are you going to have it ongoing? Community feedback online. I don't need to get feedback on Facebook, Instagram. You need feedback on the board. That's what you need. I just went into your little questionnaire. I don't need to give you a comment on how your Facebook page looks. All I know is you don't allow comments. What are you afraid of? Other schools allow comments. You can't have any comments. You post it, you say something, and that's it. Don't have anybody from the public ever say anything. Never. That's the way it works. It's a one-way street here. The board, our way, and that's it. It's terrible. So those were my comments. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing your perspective.
My name is Faith Nowalski, and I'm an eighth grader at Wall Media. This is not my first time speaking at a Board of Ed meeting. I spoke last year and the year before. I come here tonight to speak about a concern I have. In school, students are required to have two lessons passed in 45 minutes of ELII ready, where in math, the requirement is one lesson passed in 45 minutes. To be honest, I don't think you realize the stress students are under. If I were to survey a large group of my peers and ask if iReady was helping, I can almost guarantee you the answer would be no. The work we are already receiving is a lot, and adding iReady to the list is way too much. Going back and forth from the lesson in class to the lesson in iReady is harder than you think. It might be easy for teachers to look at the kids who excel faster than others and see the iReady is no problem, but the kids who struggle a little more like myself can only focus on one lesson at a time. Because of this, my grade is dropping, and I'm sure others can relate. I think instead of doing iReady, we can do more important things during class. I hope things can change in the future, and iReady is taken out of the gradebook. I hope someone can email me regarding my concerns, because in the past, that has not been the case at all. Thank you and good night.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing your perspective. Do we have any more comments at this time on the special presentations for this evening? Okay. Seeing none, we're going to be closing public comment for the special presentations at this point in time. I'm going to begin the President's Report, and I'd like to start with recognizing the Wall High School Students of the Month. For Grade Nine, we have Justin Davis. For Grade Ten, we have Peyton Kessler. For Grade Eleven, Damian Clayton. And Grade Twelve, Alexandra Zamaloff. Also for our Nights of the Week, for the week of January 2nd, we have a 10th grader, Sam Elliott. For the week of January 9th, we have 10th grader Caroline O'Hara. For the week of January 16th, we have 9th grader Massimo Peduto. And for the week of January 23rd, we have 9th grader Mustafa Sharif. I'm going to attempt in our President's Report to try to answer some questions and concerns that have been raised at previous meetings and through some emails that we have. So bear with me, okay? The Board of Education is looking forward to conducting meetings which reflect the climate and culture we expect in our classrooms across the district every day. Board meetings should be informative, productive, and civil. And as a new president, it is my duty to seek the expertise of people who are intimately involved in school board matters locally and on the state level to guide me and the board as a whole, so we can conduct business in a manner that is appropriate and successful. To that end, I have reached out to the New Jersey School Boards Association and our Monmouth County Superintendent for suggestions on how to restructure our meetings and for training for myself as the president of the board to further our success as a board and ultimately our school community. In mid-January, I communicated with Mary Ann Friedman, who is our NJSBA field representative, and requested that she review the video of our January business meeting with the goal of identifying areas needing improvement and suggestions that we can take to better our meetings productivity. Ms. Friedman was able to target several areas which had room for refinement. She reiterated the importance of recognizing that board meetings are business meetings that are conducted in public. She acknowledged the need to weigh the placement of public comment and the length of public comment to best serve our community while conducting the business of the district. to best serve our community while conducting the business of the district. She was clear that public comment is required and a meaningful opportunity for stakeholders to be heard, while also making the point that these portions of the meeting are not designed to act as public engagement sessions." "She also shared information regarding how other districts operate, their meetings, and was a valuable sounding board. I also met in person with our Monmouth County Superintendent, Dr. Les Richens, to gain insight into the practices of local school boards and to review possible options for making improvements and gaining more productive meeting sessions here in Wall. Dr. Richens echoed many of the same sentiments that were shared by Ms. Friedman and is fully supportive of making these changes to the conduct of our meetings and the public comment opportunities with the end goal of accomplishing meetings that better serve our overall community by improving the tone and demeanor of our meetings. The suggestions that I took from these conversations and meetings were forwarded to our policy committee and are reflected in proposed policy changes that will be first readings tonight. The Board of Education welcomes members of the community to attend meeting and observe the board conduct business of the school district. Members of the public are afforded the opportunity to comment on matters of interest to them, including items on published agendas during the meeting. Commoners should note that there will not be a direct response during these portions of the meeting. Response to comments will be forthcoming, if and when appropriate, during reports such as this and discussions amongst board members and district administrators during the course of the meeting or by electronic response in the days following the meeting. Please remember, members of the community are also welcome to contact the board or district administration by email at any time." "In terms of some other updates, on January 31st of this year, the board had a special meeting with the topics being the ethics training by the NJ SBA Representative, Mary Ann Friedman. Presentation was a valuable opportunity to educate our Board of Ed, as well as our community, about the guidelines that are followed throughout the state on the conduct of board members. I would like to extend the invitation for folks to take a look at the website, to view that presentation, which is on our YouTube channel that can be accessed through the website. I'm very pleased to report that the Strategic Planning Task Force met on January 31st to reignite our planning process. As has already been mentioned once, and hopefully is going to be mentioned a few more times, we really would love to invite all members of our community to attend the Strategic Planning Kickoff Meeting on March 1st at 7:00 at the WHS Auditorium, and remind everyone there will be a follow-up meeting on March 6th at 7:00 as well at WHS. Dr. Handerhand will be giving some more details about how those meetings are going to be conducted. The board is looking forward to working with the people of Wall as we chart our goals for the district together." At this point in time, I would like to turn the attention over to Dr. Handerhand for her superintendent's update.
Thank you very much, Ms. Stites. I would once again like to extend a heartfelt thank you to the Wall High School Color Guard for coming out tonight, and our student representatives to the Board of Education, Madison Brody, Bryn Heaney, and Lauren Gill. They take a lot of time out of their day to join us. You know, I would like to thank Nate Attardi once again for all of his continued dedication to our veterans. I just want to underscore that veterans must always be recognized for their sacrifice and selflessness. And I am incredibly grateful that we have such a symbolic reminder at the main entryway at Wall High School. I'd once again like to thank Ms. Jill Alexander and Ms. Carrie Kelly, our Wall High School art teachers, for just providing us such an outstanding and inspiring presentation. And a huge congratulations, because it is, it's up-to-the-minute information, the awards that were won that Ms. Alexander spoke to this evening. And a hearty congratulations going out to Kirsten Brown, Avery Noel, Ellie Hartz, Monica Kirchenbaum, and Evelyn Kinecki for their recent artistic accomplishments. So I just wanted to acknowledge their fine work. Also, congratulations to the student staff and Mr. Monafis of Central School for an amazing lip sync event this evening. We were able to provide some highlights, a little taste of it. And, you know, again, I would be remiss if I did not acknowledge all of the hard work that happens behind the scenes. And Cape certainly put a tremendous amount of time into that, and notably the lip sync chairs, Ms. Aparna Ammas, Ms. Marin Barbieri, and Ms. Shawna Hoppy. Well done. An amazing evening for our families at Central School. And I mentioned it before, but events like this are truly what gives the schools heart, and they forge such positive, positive, positive memories for our students. So I thank you, and I look forward to so many more wonderful opportunities for our students. I would like to circle back earlier in the month of February for a huge congratulations to the Wall High School students that were inducted into the National Honor Society. And we also had a very special basketball game. And I would like to congratulate the Wall Challenger Basketball and Lady Knights Basketball Team for just an amazing game, and for all the students that came out to support, you know, the Wall Challenger Team and the Lady Knights Basketball Team. So a tremendous evening, and if you, you know, follow us on social media, you would have seen a highlight. If you haven't, I invite you to, you know, follow us and review one of the films from that game. It was a magical evening, and I was incredibly proud to be the superintendent of this district. "Each year, superintendents are required to report out on data pertaining to school violence and vandalism that occurred during a designated time period. The school violence and vandalism reporting categories include alleged tibs, confirmed tibs, acts of violence, vandalism, weapons, and incidents involving substance abuse. Please visit the district website to review the specific and detailed breakdown of reporting for each of our schools. For those of you that are joining us in person this evening, copies of this report are available for you at the back table." "The data from time period one. Time period one is September 1st through December 31st, 2022. This speaks to closed matters, closed matters only. Any ongoing matters would not be reported in this particular reporting period. So if an investigation is in the midst right now, perhaps we had a HIB that came, a HIB report that came in yesterday, it would not be included in this data, because this data speaks to closed investigations and matters only." "So during the reporting period one, Wall High School had a total of 12 New Jersey Department of Education Closed Categorized Incidents, four confirmed tibs, one incident of property damage, six incidents related to substance abuse, and one incident of substance possession. Wall Intermediate School had a total of eight NJ DOE Closed Categorized Incidents, six confirmed tibs, one fight, and one incident of a simple threat. Allenwood School had a total of one NJ DOE Closed Categorized Incident, one incident, and that comprised of one incident of a simple threat. Central School had a total of two NJ DOE Closed Categorized Incidents, one confirmed tib, and one incident of a simple threat. Old Mill School had one NJ DOE Closed Categorized Incident, and that was one confirmed tib. West Belmar School, there were no incidents reported during period one, nor were there any incidents reported during this period at Wall Primary School. If any member of the public has any comments with respect to the data from time period one, you will have the opportunity to share that information during sections of this meeting dedicated for public comment." "I would like to reiterate that this information will be available under the harassment, intimidation, and bullying section of our website. And for those of you that are here this evening, we do have a copy of the report at the back of the table. So I just, in the back, at the back of the auditorium on the table. As was mentioned throughout this evening, and as you are certainly aware, the district is in its second phase of strategic planning. This stage invites community members to provide perspective in a focused setting. This strategic plan is focusing on the following areas. Ms. McCann alluded to them earlier during our mid-year presentation. The focused areas are academics, student wellness, student life, finance and facilities, and communication. Two evenings will be dedicated to these community focus groups, March 1st and March 6th. An overview of the vision and strategic planning process will be held on March 1st at 7:00 PM in the high school auditorium. Two focus groups, the areas are academics and finance and facilities, will take place immediately following the overview on March 1st. We are asking members of the community if you would please register for one or both of the focus sessions. I'll talk a little bit more about the registration in a moment. So two, I just want to highlight, we, the Strategic Plan Task Force, wanted, they didn't want participants to make a choice. They didn't want someone to be pigeonholed into only attending one or two sessions. They wanted members of the community to have the opportunity to share their thoughts on all five areas. And to do so, we set it up over two nights. And immediately following the overview, there will be sessions, one on academics and one at finance and facilities. Then, there will be a second session. So if you attended academics for the first session, and if you're interested, you can go immediately to the second session on finance and facilities, and vice versa. So we structured it so that everyone has the opportunity to go to each and every topic if they choose to. So the layout for the second evening, and the second evening is March 6th, we actually have a start date of March 6th, because on March 6th, we have a start time of 6:00 PM, because we are, we're offering three different sessions. So the remaining focus areas, we want to make sure that we provide enough time and host three of the focused areas. So the three focus groups that are going to be highlighted on March 6th, student wellness, student life, and communications. And again, you're invited, the public is invited, to participate in one session, two sessions, or three sessions of various topics. We wanted to give our community opportunities if they choose to attend all of them. For more information about the strategic planning process and how to register, please visit our district website. Thank you to Mr. Sam Filippo highlighting the, really, all the assets of our district website and how it really is a resource for not only parents, not only our students, but community members as well. For your convenience, I want to bring your attention to a QR code that has been dedicated to strategic planning registration. So this QR code is available on our website. It's available through social media and through a handout that is provided here this evening. So we have a nice handout that Ms. Daniel prepared for the public this evening, so that, so that the access is as instant as we can possibly make it to really enhance community engagement. And if you do prefer to register by phone, please contact Ms. Heather Daniel to complete your registration. I encourage Wall Township community members to register for at least one of these sessions. Please share your thoughts as the district engages in this extremely important process. We truly, we truly want to hear from you. I would like to also add that the presentations that were here this evening will also be available on our district website. So again, the district website is serving as really a launching pad for so much, so much information, but also for the wonderful happenings that are taking place within the district. I would like to mention, just a note, on tonight's agenda, we have the school calendar. And I know that there, I did receive a couple communications regarding the calendar. And I would like to make mention that this year, we have, you know, we have a good problem. The good problem is the voters of, the voters in Wall Township passed the referendum. And it is a gift to this district. And it is, obviously, this is going to be a highlight of meetings, certainly tonight and moving forward. But with that comes, with all of the design, all of the planning, we need to ensure that we have as much of a time, a chunk of time to complete the construction projects. So the calendar that is on tonight's agenda is a calendar that, out of necessity, is for 2023, 2024. And we will be getting out after the second, on this calendar, getting out of school after the second week of June. That enables us to have as much time as possible to really complete the construction projects that will ultimately be slated for the 2024 summer. So we had another consideration this year. The calendar is, there's a lot of thought that goes into the calendar. There is a lot of considerations. We consult testing schedules. We must adhere to certainly labor contracts in the district. We also, you know, we need to make sure that breaks are spaced accordingly for, for, you know, our families and the employees in the district. So there is a great deal of consideration. But I would like to stress that this year, we had an added consideration, and that is the wonderful consideration of planning for construction following the passing of the referendum this past December. So again, I wish to thank the voters, because we are so incredibly excited about that, and we look forward to sharing information with the public, certainly at these meetings, but also through our website where Ms. Daniel highlighted this evening. So with that, I would like to turn the meeting back to you, Ms. President.
Thank you. This time, we have several members of our board who are going to be contributing to our Board of Education update. I'd like to start with Mr. Tom Buffa.
Thank you, Madam President. Oh, that's much louder than it was before. So I was, I was fortunate enough to participate in, and I'm probably way off here with the name of it, but I think it was called Pinch Hit for an ESP, which I'm assuming was Educational Support Professional. So what that was, was we received an invite from Ms. Morin of the WTEA, and we were kind of asked if we'd like to participate in shadowing a cafeteria worker, or a custodian, or a member of the Transportation Department. I chose a member of the Transportation Department, and I was assigned to Bus 12 with Ms. Linda Miles and Ms. Inez Schlosky. To say that I was shocked in how their, how their four-hour end-of-the-day routine went is an understatement. These ladies were total professionals. They pack these kids into a tin cylinder and drive them around, and they know every single stop, and they know every single place they have to go. And they handle everything with such ease. And it was, it was really, for somebody who reflected back to the early 90s when I was on a bus, and I thought it was just somebody sitting up front steering, it was really, really an eye-opener, and it was an experience that, I mean, I really enjoyed, and just really gave me a newfound respect for the men and women who drive our buses and vans, because it is a very, very challenging job. I mean, I went home and took three ibuprofen, because I never knew kids could scream as loud as these kids were screaming, and I have five kids. So it was, it was really, really a great experience. And if the ladies are listening, I really would like to thank them for, you know, taking the time to kind of show me their afternoon, and thank Ms. Morin for providing the opportunity. And I look forward to maybe doing it again next year, maybe. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Buffa. I'll remember to sign you up for that. Now may we hear from Kristen Hodnett.
I was also lucky enough to participate in a pinch hit of a service provider, and I was paired with a classroom paraprofessional, Mrs. Farrell, at West Belmar, who was so welcoming and just shared her whole morning with me. We were, we were in Ms. Binkley's kindergarten class, and I had the pleasure and the joy of spending the morning watching students be supported in- of spending the morning watching students be supported, encouraged, engaged, and of course taught. We played games, we read, we talked about letters, we spoke about our feelings and connected. I felt like a true member of the class by the end of the day, and I'm just so grateful that I had the experience to be part of that morning. So thank you to Mrs. Farrell. She showed me all the ins and outs of her job and answered my questions when I had them. And thank you to Ms. Binkley. I know that, you know, having an outsider in your classroom isn't always what people are excited to do, and she was so welcoming, and she's such a wonderful educator. And then I just have one additional note. As somebody who's on the Curriculum and Instruction Committee, I know firsthand all of the work that Mrs. McCann, Mrs. Steiner, and Mrs. Daniels do. They present all the time at our committee meetings, and it was no surprise to see the updates on the district goals with you three running the show. So thank you for all the work you do.
Thank you. And we'd like to thank the members of the WTEA. Mr. Sam Filippo was able to participate last month at WIS. So it's given a nice give and take with the board, and then being able to share it with our community, how hard our staff is working is really important. This month, I was lucky enough to attend the NHS induction ceremony. I'd like to thank Mrs. Glenn and Mrs. Santiago and the senior members of the NHS who so graciously and beautifully welcomed the junior class. It was a beautifully run production. They did a great job, and congratulations to all of them. I was also fortunate enough to attend the lip sync in person. It was everything that a community event should be. Not only was it entertaining, the kids did a great job, but it really demonstrated the commitment that the parents at Central School have. The amount of work that went into pulling off that production was incredible. And also seeing the faculty and staff number was just amazing, to see how many people really put the time in to celebrate with the kids. Not only did we see great performances, we saw kids just shine, whether they were outgoing, whether they were shy, and they cheered for each other. So it was an incredible performance, but it was so much more. So I'd like to thank Central School and thank Cape and all the staff that worked so hard to put that together. At this time, I'm going to turn the mic over to Mr. Adam Nasser for a referendum project update, as well as a report on the Monmouth County SBA meeting.
So my month wasn't as exciting as everybody else's was. I get the boring stuff. So I'll start with the Monmouth County School Board Association meeting. I am our liaison to the county school board reps. For those that don't know, the entire county has a association of school board members that get together once a month and discuss common issues, common goals. We routinely meet with the executive county superintendent, Dr. Les Richens, and other state officials, so that there's a communication from the state level down to the local level as to what is on the state's radar legislatively or within the executive branch, and what we are seeing on the ground. This month, we discussed, this month was very informative. There was a presentation by Dr. Goldie and Ms. Patel. They talked about onboarding new board members, and I'm happy to say that a lot of the things we're already doing to onboard new board members are, are part of those best practices that are out there. I do have some suggestions down the line, but, you know, we can talk about that once we go into the election next year and we see who is on the bubble. But probably the most significant thing I took away from the meeting was a legislative update with a lot of the goings-on in Trenton and how it can affect us. The first was, there was a, the, so New Jersey has a overall school board. That school board passes overall policy and oversees a lot of the school ethics commission. There were some significant changes made to that law that I'm sure are going to trickle down into our policy at some point in our bylaws. So I did send out some communications to Mr. Malif and Ms. Stites on what those are going to look like. So we expect it when it finally comes our way from Strouds Asmae. Additionally, the Assembly Education Committee advanced a few bills, one of which is fairly extensive in regards to school facilities law and how the SDA operates on the state level. Not going to bore you with all the details, but really, the, the four main things that are going to affect us is when we have projects over $10 million, we'll be required to have a third-party construction management firm to oversee those projects. There's a provision to allow districts to raise funding through bonds, similar to what we did with the referendum, without going for a vote. If there is a situation where we have housing moving in, and to attract that housing, pilot projects are being issued. Again, I'm not going to get into details of it, but that is one thing I'm looking into. Same with county improvement authorities. We can partner with the municipality, and we can partner with county improvement authorities to finance projects. And last is, it has to do with how private partnerships function and how we, our capital reserve account interacts with that. Again, very exciting stuff, and I apologize to everybody here. In addition to that, some of the other bills, A 3227 would eliminate the limit on two-year college credit transfers. There, there's a lot of bills that are aiming to get as many teachers into the system as possible, not necessarily by lowering the standards, but by opening the standards up to different experiences with people's lives, especially professionals that are, you know, practicing in their field, that are looking to make the change into the teaching profession. That two-year college limit would shift, and I am in no way a teacher, so I'm going to butcher this for the certified people in the room. But it prohibits the New Jersey State Board of Education from adopting regulations that restrict the number of two-year college credits in the field of professional education that may be accepted towards meeting teacher certification requirements, provided that the credits are accepted by a state-approved college professional education prep program. Another one, the Alternative Teaching Pathway, basically is establishing an alternate certificate eligibility, and with advanced standing and alternate certificates of eligibility, they'd be eligible to meet those requirements and not necessarily have to pass the practices too. Am I pronouncing that correctly? Okay. A 4720 is a survey, survey on Holocaust instruction that the DOE is going to be required to develop and distribute to school districts on instruction on the Holocaust and genocides. And again, I want to stress, these are being advanced out of committee to the overall legislature for votes. And the last one, this was discussion-only, was to eliminate the high school graduation proficiency test. There is no bill attached to that. That was a feedback-only discussion that occurred in the Assembly Committee. On the Senate side, the Budget Committee is advancing two bills. One has to do with tuition for non-resident students. This would create a county-wide tuition rate through the executive county superintendent. There are certain exceptions in that for, say, teaching staff members, members of the military, et cetera. But that is under consideration. And then the Rowan Vet Teach Pilot Program is a, also to help get vets into teaching and establish a program for vets to achieve their four-year bachelor's degree and get their certificate eligibility with advanced standing. So a lot of things on the legislative side this month, as they come out, I'll be reporting on this once a month, so I will try to keep everybody up to speed. And if there's anything relevant to your committee areas, I'll try to get that out in a timely fashion as best that I can. Should I do referendum now, or wait till? So referendum-wise, there is a, on the website, under referendum, the financial piece up there. We discussed this month, two projects in particular, having to do with paving and some of the roofing at the high school. Those schedules are out from the architect, and it looks like beginning of May, we will be advertising, opening the bids in the beginning of June, June 8th, and awarding at the June meeting for work over the summer. Other than that, I, I put numbers together, but actually, I, I'm going to reference the website page because it's more up-to-date than what I had preparing for the meeting. But the soft costs at the bottom are not actually all tied up yet. Those are estimates right now. The first column is all the proposals and numbers that we have, an idea of what they're going to be, or exact costs. The second column is what we paid out to date, and then whatever balances are due are in the last column. So I'm going to reference that going forward. Not much progress on when the bonds are going to be out yet. We're waiting for more information to come back as soon as I have that. Hopefully, next month, we'll share that, and that's really all I have on referendum this month. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, at this point, we're going to move into committee reports. Minutes are published, and we are going to ask Mr. Jim Malif, who is the head of our Policy Committee, to give us an update.
Thank you, Madam President. Policy Committee is making the following recommendations for revisions to these policies. Policy 0164, which is the conduct of board meetings, we are proposing that there will be two sections of public comment. The first section of public comment will take place after the roll call, and that can be on any school-related issue. The second public comment will take place after committee reports, and that will be on agenda item actions, and that will be, take place before the board votes on any actions. In the public comment section for policy 0167, in each public comment section, time allowed will be three minutes per individual. We have looked at the policies of other Monmouth County Boards of Education, and these policies are consistent with quite a few, and in fact, probably a majority of the boards in Monmouth County. We feel that placing public comment on school issues at the beginning of the meeting will encourage more people to participate in public comment, because it is, it is at that time, at the beginning of the meeting, when the largest number of people are at the meeting, and they should have opportunity to comment on school-related issues at that time. Some of the other revisions, policy 3216 and 4216, Dress and Grooming. This policy has been updated to reflect best practices and removes gender-specific rules for teaching and support staff. The attendance policies and regulation, policy 5200, Regulation 5200, this policy and regulation reflects the differences in attendance reporting as it relates to state and federal purposes, which are very specific for excused and unexcused absences. And those policies set by the local district, the district may set its own policies for truancy, student conduct, and promotion-retention. Awarding of credit is determined by state law. Policy 52, 5512, which is harassment, intimidation, and bullying. This policy has been revised by the state, and Strouds Asmae has made recommendations for us to follow that these statutes that have been set forth. So as they exist today, our policy is in line with what the state requires. One thing of note, in the policy, in the, in the regulations, rather, in the state law, there is an option for principals to, with their discretion, investigate HIB without going through the entire process. Our district is not going to take that option. Every report of harassment, intimidation, and bullying will be fully reported as an HIB report, will not be done at the discretion of the principal. It should be noted also that even if a report is not found to be HIB, and there are very specific things that need to take place for a report to be considered, harassment, intimidation, bullying, it should be noted that consequences for violations that are not HIB, but still may be violations of the Student Code of Conduct, will be, will, consequences will be attached to that, as well as law enforcement notified if appropriate. All right. Regulations, 8420.2, 8420.7, 8420.10, which deal with bomb threat lockdown procedures and active shooters. Schools must have safety and security plans consistent with the requirements of state law. But these regulations are not subject to public access for the purposes of student, staff, and school safety. And policy 9120 and Regulation 9120, dealing with public relations, some changes that we're making there. The reporting of district goals has been added to the public information program. Furthermore, if permission is needed for release of student identifying information, previously written permission was required, that has been replaced by expressed permission. The district website and other electronic communications replace the paper district newsletter. Regarding release of information to the press of board actions of, quote, lesser importance, the superintendent will replace the building principal in releasing that information. And going forward, student handbooks will be electronically produced to students, parents, and legal guardians. And furthermore, just regarding a, a policy that was up for second reading tonight, which is 0142, Board Member Qualifications, Prohibited Acts, and Code of Ethics, due to some of the recent changes that Mr. Nasser just mentioned, we're going to table this policy for the, for this time being, and we will revisit it at our next policy meeting, and will, it will go back on after we revise it as a first reading. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Malif. Do any of our other committee chairs have anything that they would like to add? Again, minutes are posted on the website. Mrs. Hodnitt?
Just a quick announcement, we talked a little bit in Curriculum and Instruction about summer programming, and the save the dates will be coming out in the near future, so just stay tuned for that. Something different for this year is that they will begin before the 4th, whereas previously they began after the 4th. So just for planning and vacationing and all of those things.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Okay. Prior...
Sorry, just for clarification with regard to the second reading of policy 0142, we're not taking action to table it, but we're just not going to move it at the point of the second reading, just for the technical clarification. Thanks.
Okay. Prior to opening the floor for public comment on agenda action items, as an outgrowth, again, from the conversations with our state folks and our local leadership, we have revised a little bit of a statement that is currently on the agenda, and as a reminder, we've been requested to read it. The board requests those individuals speaking will be courteous and mindful of the rights of other individuals when making comments. Specifically, comments regarding individual students and school personnel are discarded and will not be responded to by the board. Students and employees have specific legal rights afforded by the laws of New Jersey. The Wall Township Board of Education bears no responsibility, nor will it be liable for any comments made by members of the public. Speakers should consider their comments in light of the legal rights of those affected by or identified in their comments, and recognize they are legally responsible. by or identified in their comments, and recognize they are legally responsible for and liable for their comments. Thank you. At this point in time, we'd like to open the floor for public comment on agenda action items, for the purposes, for the purpose of commenting on agenda items, this is on things that the board will be taking action on this evening, and you can use up top or down below, whichever you like.
Thank you. Thank you, Patty Nowalski, Wall Township. Before I comment, I gotta get out of here, get her to bed, but I just wanted to say, if any of you haven't noticed, the new principal at Wall Intermediate School is doing a great job. I've seen a lot of change this year that I didn't see in the first year, that faith was here because it was COVID, and then it was mass COVID, then it was just mass crazy, and there was no, like, teaching inclusion, like, I, I wasn't here, I never was here, and it's just a lot more positive coming from my child, and I'm very excited for my incoming sixth grader, and Mrs. Antonella is doing a great job in Old Mill, and the kids love her, she's, she's quite a comedian, so I just wanted to say thank you and recognize the principals. The only reason I'm here is about the calendar, if that's okay, because I know Dr. Hanahan spoke about it. The question I have is that Good Friday is a half-day now. Good Friday is a New Jersey state holiday, we have all state holidays off, and as a practicing Catholic, Christian, very Catholic community, this has always been a day off before spring break, since I was little and I went to St. Rose in Manasquan, so I don't wanna know, I understand now that it's construction, but you're taking away from a religious holiday for some, so, and it's a state holiday, so I'm wondering why. I have the Manasquan Elementary School calendar, I know people say we're Wall, but if you go to CCD at any of these churches, they follow anything to do with Manasquan, they start a day later than us, they have a three-day Memorial Day weekend, they have a five-day February break, and they only get out four days after us, so I was doing the math and we're still behind, so if we could maybe get that day back, that would be great. That's really all I had to say about it, I'm not gonna argue with anybody, I'm, this is the new Patty, I'm done with that. Thank you, have a good evening. Not getting anywhere, anyway.
Thank you for sharing your perspective. Good evening.
Betsy Cross, I live in Wall Township. She's had a couple questions on the agenda. That HIB report, I think it would have been helpful if you had it attached to the agenda and you actually called it what it was, it wasn't attached, and why was this not under presentation, so that people could get up and ask questions on it? I was kinda surprised to see Central School, I think they had 12, 12 complaints, none of them were HIBs, maybe one of them was. Something this important, I'm hearing from people constantly about busing issues. I've seen that busing issue, somebody sent it to me like a month ago, it's horrendous. So how, how are we at zero? I don't know. Something so important should have been a presentation and should have given it to parents ahead of time, you shouldn't have had to have come here to get it, it's ridiculous. I see referendum money being moved around. Can Mr. Smythe, Ms. Stites, you should ask Mr. Smythe, that's kinda what the president does, if he could answer the question of, we're transferring $10,000, we had had $79,500, we're adding $10,000, and our new fees are $89,500. What did you have to add an extra $10,000 for, for referendum services? I see a lot of money moving around, it looks like there was like a salary slush fund for $67,000, and you moved out $67,000, what a coincidence that is. Payroll is way up. In just five years, payroll was up for the month, $587,000, just for the month of February. All we're doing is paying out people more money. We're, we're losing more and more students, and we're paying more and more money. I also see, this one really, I, I just can't even understand this, if you could go over this tonight, we're paying over $11,000 for a child to go to Central Regional, where that poor child just killed herself, and it's very strange how it's on tonight's agenda, but they start at September 27th. Then I went and looked at Central School's agendas, and Central Regional, and I don't see them saying that this child is going there. What happened? Are they being audited and it got caught that you, we got somebody going there and you're paying $11,500? What does Central Regional have that Wall doesn't have? Why are we paying kids to go there in Bayville? So I'd like an answer on that tonight, and I posted it on Facebook, and everybody's like, what the hell is this? So Ms. Stites, I sent it to you, and people would like an answer tonight. We don't want the runaround, don't, we don't answer questions, it's ridiculous. Health insurance, what's going on? Why is there nothing attached? You're way over. I, I see it in the FNF minutes, that's why Mr. Nasser couldn't read them. What is going on? Where are you gonna get this money from? Numbers should be posted. I shouldn't have to put it in Oprah to get the monthly numbers and add them up myself, it's ridiculous. Assistant BA re, job was reposted, but since Mr. Nasser didn't put his minutes up until like today, we couldn't tell that it got reposted on February 1st. Your minutes are supposed to be up the Friday after you have them, not the day before the meeting. What is going on with the assistant business administrator position? Do we not have the perfect person that we can hire? We've gone out, what, three times now? What is going on? Attorneys. I went back and I put it in Oprah for all the attorney bills, for the seven attorneys that I can see being paid in lawsuits, Flynn Watts LLC, Meth Feshel &amp; Werber, Cleary Jacoby Alfery &amp; Jacobs, Goldberg Sagala, Scorillo, both sets of firms, Michael Gross, the Bush Law Group, and these are, these are amounts that Mr. Nasser says, oh, we don't, we don't, we don't add those up, it's just a deductible. Well, we need to add them up, because when you add 50,000 times seven, we're at 350 grand, and you're not adding it up. You have to do better. I ran into two people today in the school, worked in schools, they said, the board is a disgrace, how they don't answer questions is ridiculous, this nonsense, and we spoke to Lester Richards, watch Marlboro, watch Middletown, watch it, you people, watch it. People answer questions, that's why you're on a board. You're not up here to just sit up here and give blank stares and not answer any questions. We need questions answered, and every question I ask tonight, I'd like you to either answer it tonight, or tell me when you're gonna get back to me with an answer, because I won't have to keep coming back here on the trailers when you answer my questions. Did Mr. Smythe agree to be interviewed-
Thank you for sharing your perspective, Mrs. Cross.
For any three investigations on the trailers.
Thank you for sharing your perspective.
It's not my, it's not, I'm not sharing a perspective, I want an answer. I will file ethics complaints personally against you, Chris.
Do we have anyone else for public comment on agenda action items? Seeing none, we'll be closing the floor. At this time, may I have a motion? Oh, excuse me, yes.
Just in response to public comment with regard to the minutes for the Finance Facilities Committee being added to the agenda this morning, that is on me, not Mr. Nasser, he provided the minutes last week, although there is no reference to the assistant business administrator position in the FNF minutes, unless I'm-
Yes, it is. Just freedom, I'll freedom for you.
Thank you. Okay. At this time, I would ask for a motion for the approval of minutes for the reorganization meeting of January 3rd, the executive session, meeting minutes of January 17th, the special, oops, excuse me. The special minute, meeting minutes of January 31st. May I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Sanfilippo?
I'll second it.
Mrs. Hodnitt? We have a roll call?
Mr. Adenizio?
Yes.
Mr. Buffa?
Yes.
Ms. De Giovanni?
Yes.
Ms. Hodnitt?
Yes.
Mr. Maliff?
Yes.
Mr. Nasser?
Yes.
Mr. Sanfilippo?
Yes.
Mr. Wondrack?
Yes.
Ms. Stites?
Yes. At this time, may I have a motion for the approval of the first policy readings listed on the agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Is that Mr. Adenizio?
I'll second.
Miss, Miss De Giovanni? Thank you, may we have a roll call?
Mr. Buffa?
Yes.
Ms. De Giovanni?
Yes.
Ms. Hodnitt?
Yes.
Mr. Maliff?
Yes.
Mr. Nasser?
Yes.
Mr. Sanfilippo?
Yes.
Mr. Wondrack?
Yes.
Mr. Adenizio?
Yes.
Ms. Stites?
Yes. We will not be considering policy 0142, Mr. Smythe?
Correct.
For second reading?
I asked for a motion for all policies with the exception of policy 0142.
May I have a motion for the approval of the second policy readings with the exception of 0142?
I'll make that, I'll make that motion.
Mr. Maliff?
I'll second it.
Mr. Wondrack? Mr. Smythe, roll call?
Ms. De Giovanni?
Yes.
Ms. Hodnitt?
Yes.
Mr. Maliff?
Yes.
Mr. Nasser?
Yes.
Mr. Sanfilippo?
Yes.
Mr. Wondrack?
Yes.
Mr. Adenizio?
Yes.
Mr. Buffa?
Yes.
Ms. Stites?
Yes. At this time, may I have a motion for the approval of the consent agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Nasser?
I'll second.
Mr. Adenizio? Mr. Smythe, roll call, please.
Ms. Hodnitt?
Yes.
Mr. Maliff?
Yes.
Mr. Nasser?
Yes.
Mr. Sanfilippo?
Yes.
Mr. Wondrack?
Yes.
Mr. Adenizio?
Yes.
Mr. Buffa?
Yes.
Ms. De Giovanni?
Yes.
Ms. Stites?
Yes. At this time, we'd like to open the floor for public comment on all school-related issues. Again, please feel free to use the podium and the microphone at the top, or the podium down below.
Don Herbert, you just approved the minutes, but you did not approve December, January 17th Business Meeting, is there a reason why you did the workshop, closed session for the 17th, but not the Business Meeting of the 17th? Skip that one. Is that part of the, part of the resolution or not?
If it was missed, if it was missed, or do we separate?
That is my mistake. I apologize, thank you, sir. May I have a motion, please? Oh, I'm sorry. Well, we'll finish public comment first, thank you. We'll get back to that, sir. Do we have anyone else at this time for public comment on all school-related issues? Items of interest?
Hi, my name is Jill. I'm the parent of a student at Wall High School. This is my first time making a statement to the Board of Ed. I hope this shows how strongly I feel about this issue. Takes a lot of courage and commitment to stand here before the board and discuss this issue, but I'm taking my chances with hopes of no repercussions for my child or my family. My child did not want me to mention our last name, for fear of being any issues of repercussion, but she feels strongly enough for me to come here and speak about this issue. I have a student at the Wall School System since primary school. Teachers and staff have been nothing but amazing. I truly believe she's the student she is today because of the commitment to her education from her students, from her teachers and staff. Now we are in Wall High School, we have dealt with freshman fall season of inappropriate touching, and a senior trip situation that now has us with an interim principal. Now her sophomore year, we are dealing with a new issue. On that note, I now have a student whose anxiety is suddenly appearing with the presence of an administrator in the hallways and lunch areas. This is obviously striking a chord with my daughter, since she has brought it to my attention on more than one occasion. Maybe this administrator could be properly educated and trained as to having a no-hands-on strategy to get their solutions with their students. I am raising a daughter who we consistently educate about how to handle inappropriate touching, should anyone put her in that situation. Yet I am listening to numerous situations at the high school about this staff member continuously using a hands-on approach to get solutions. I send her off to school every day despite her anxiety over this staff member because she loves her teachers and her education that she's receiving at Wall High School. I find this staff member's actions completely inappropriate, I dread the day someone possibly becomes injured from an unwanted touch, and yet Wall will see another lawsuit to handle. I hope other parents are paying attention to this issue and reaching out to appropriate staff to rectify the situation. Perhaps this staff member is not a good fit for Wall High School. I truly believe her education at Wall High School is above and beyond others in this area. I do not want to have to pull her from Wall and send her to a different high school at this point. We gave her multiple options to choose other high schools, and she always chooses Wall. Please find swift solution, uh, please find a swift solution to this staff member's inappropriate actions. I will also be following up with an email to Dr. Hanahan, and CCing, the Board of Ed, Christine Stites, Registrar Karen McGowan, and Dr. Riggi. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing your perspective. Do we have anyone else for public comment?
Betsy Cross, I live in Wall Township. Yeah, it takes a lot of courage to get up there and do that, and I appreciate that she did that. I did get an anonymous letter in my, in my mailbox, and I get them a lot, and might be along the same theme as what she's talking about, but if the person's listening and if they want me to post it, I will post it on Facebook. They were outlining some issues. If they want me to outline some of the issues, just let me know. I don't know how to get in touch with you, but you obviously know how to get in touch with me. So I hope you address this woman's concern, and we don't have the usual black box of emails going in, and they never get a response, because Athena Cornell says, just ignore the people. So, HIB investigation, Central School, 12 alleged, one confirmed. I, I don't know, that sounds awfully light to me. Wall Intermediate, 10 alleged, six confirmed. There's no dates on here, it would be really helpful, before you post this, put dates on. What is the timeframe on this? Wall High School, 11 alleged, four confirmed. Problem is, the people watching this have no idea what we're talking about, because you didn't post anything. And then, the, the comment regarding the business administrator, assistant business administrator is under the Personnel Committee minutes. That was posted on Friday. It should have been posted way before then, because this was typed up, the date is February 1st, so you gotta get your minutes up there. So, Mr. Nasser's, to me, is the, one of the most important ones, because we're talking about a referendum we know nothing about, and you're doing nothing in public. So I will be on you like white on rice, Mr. Nasser. Right, so get your minutes up right when they're done, so we're not haunting you down for them. Get this health insurance information, and get it online, and put it up there like it used to be. I did not have an answer on why we're paying that student at Central Regional, but I'm gonna reach out to the DOE tomorrow if I don't get a response tonight. You obviously know what it was, you all got it when you were sitting in the back room, you all know the answer, and you should put it online tonight, because something stinks with this. It does not make any sense to be paying $11,500 to go to Central Regional and only post it now, after there was a suicide. Mr. Smythe and his delays of Oprahs, he, he's got four extension requests for something, I put it in Oprah, I mean, somebody put it in Oprah to Central Regional on an Oprah log. They got back 632 pages in two days. Brian can't return an Oprah log with three headings in it for five people over 10 days. If it's- If it's him or Mr. Hyam, you got to get rid of him. There's been a lawsuit on this already by John Pfaff, he's very familiar with this. Something's not right. So if Mr. Smythe can't do his job, you got to get rid of him. What are you hiding now? Because when you don't turn over information, you're hiding something. Then I was shocked to see from Mr. Smythe's resume, something I had opened in 2016, and he left out a letter that said he was the construction manager for Colts Neck High School, something he completely left out of his resume. How could you not put that in your resume? Maybe if you were working for Bovis? But something's wrong, something's not right here. So I went to Colts Neck, I opened the documents, Mr. Smythe's sitting right here, you can ask him. Who were you working for? Were you working for Bovis, and they were paying you? Was Colts Neck paying you? What is going on here?
Mrs. Cross, please direct your comments to me as the chair.
Right. Ms. Stites, ask him the question. Nobody knows where this guy came from, except everybody he worked for has gone to prison. Right? Bovis went to prison, Hable went to prison, Pravat Pataan went to prison, and we're here, still here jerking around with him not returning Oprah requests and getting lawsuits and Yeah, Jack Hahn, we paid him another over $1,000. So for bad moves by prior Board of Ed members, we get stuck with them, and we got a lot of bad, bad decision-making people up here. My only faith, again, is in Kathleen Di Giovanni. That is it. I have no faith in anybody else up here.
Thank you, Mrs. Cross, for sharing your perspective, your time is up.
It's not my perspective, I'd like answers, answer.
Do we have anyone else for public comment at this time? Seeing none, I'm going to close the floor for public comment, and I need to return to my error on the approval of the minutes. Can we please have a motion for the approval of the meeting minutes for January 17th, 2023?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. San Filippo?
I'll second.
Mr. Wondrack? Mr. Smythe, roll call, please.
Mr. Malaf?
Yes.
Mr. Nassar?
Yes.
Mr. San Filippo?
Yes.
Mr. Wondrack?
Yes.
Mr. Adenizio?
Yes.
Mr. Buffa?
Yes.
Ms. Di Giovanni?
Yes.
Ms. Hodnett?
Yes.
Ms. Stites?
Yes. So I think this was a tremendously productive meeting, I thank everyone for attending. Congratulations to our students in our different programs for all their accomplishments, and the staff that worked so hard to get them where they are. At this point, I'd like to ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. San Filippo?
I'll second it.
Mrs. Hodnett? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Everyone have a great week.